Of our pre meeting conversation out with so.
Good, good.
At least I hope he does, if he doesn't save that in a separate file somewhere. Alright, I've got six o'clock, we'll call the meeting in order, uh we have all board members present. Um and then we do have some additions to the agenda, everybody had an opportunity to see that. Any questions on that, if not, we'll uh look for approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
Got a motion from Bruce, a second from Cheryl, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye, opposed say no, carried.
Aye.
Uh public comment, do we have nobody here for public comment, no. Nothing there, no there, we'll move on to consent agenda. Um. Jenelle, I'll let you kinda run with some of the highlights of the consent agenda.
Yep.
Uh well, actually, if we want, we'll go to Cheryl first, get the bills and stuff taken care of, if you, anything on there?
Sheryl's.
Yeah.
Um, nothing of note that went wrong, but uh I noticed we probably made our last payment to the Coronus Ministries for the gymnastics facility. Use, so, cause they're back home.
Nice.
And uh they have a sign for the new addition, evidently will be going up soon, the one on the front of the uh four court gym. And we have a bunch of new iPads and Chromebooks in, so they're ready to distribute. And then ongoing building and construction costs, but everything was normal, just those are some things that I just noted.
I did, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Um and personnel items, what do you, that Jenelle?
Sure, um so Anita Flanders, um she is eligible for a teaching license this year, so this is her uh tier two uh teaching license. Um so um Audra Lura, if I say that correctly, um so Audra is, was hired as an intervention interventionist um as part of the Adsys grant.
Okay.
And then um Betty and Lori would be paraprofessionals, neither, none of those are new positions, they're just added um shuffles and replacements, so. Um Don Noel and Cheryl Bonham, you'll recognize those names as retirements obviously. Um Don's coming back to do a zero hour, and then she's also part of a shared um, a shared contract for the um district assessment coordinator with BBE. So that's one of those roles that it it makes sense when you have somebody that's doing it, it's kinda nice when the brain's there, you just go for both and can be done. Um Cheryl's retirement was a, she was kind of a buyback, so that's a cost savings for us, um but she's going to be filling that role again. Um you did see the resignation notice from Max resigning his building as a ground position, and the leave request is a medical leave for Christine.
Um, looking for a motion.
Well, as I understand, Max also resigning from AD.
It.
Um at the end of the twenty twenty.
Right, but we're accepting that because resignation tonight.
That's, that's the way it was written, so that they.
Yeah, that's the way we're gonna type.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
A second.
I have a motion from Bruce, a second from Rick, is there any further discussion? One question, another question I had was uh uh Don, so her contract, is that the one that's shared with BBE, like so she'll, she has a shared contract with BBE as well then?
Oops.
Sorry.
So the um, the, the shared contract is for the assessment coordinator portion, but her zero hour is just us, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Is that, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, we'll give Maggie a minute.
Let me turn my.
Yeah, you are.
Oh.
Mom, what did you do to me?
Yeah. Alright, any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye, opposed say no, that's carried.
Aye.
Communication items, Jenelle, back to you.
Alright, so a couple of things that I just want you, wanted to kind of bring to your attention, um the MSBA summer seminar is coming up, um August fifth. It is going to be a virtual seminar again, um it'll go from eight o'clock to one o'clock, uh come up some of the items that are on there. Um there is going to be a safe learning report, um again, some of the updates, we haven't received some of the final guidance from um MDE after the CDC came out with their latest updates. So I'm eagerly awaiting that, um but I do expect we'll have some information um at the summer seminar that way. There is gonna be a focus on, on student mental health um as part of that seminar as well. There's a focus on district equity and, and inclusivity. There will be um MDE updates from the commissioner, and then there will be um a session from the two, um Terry Morrow and um. I, the other name is escaping me from MSBA around the page amendment and some of the information that's been kind of circulating throughout the state and. Um in the works to have that on the twenty twenty two election ballot, so some information will be presented for that. So if you have interest in attending the summer seminar, uh talk to Miranda and we'll get you registered for that summer seminar. Again, the date is August fifth, um from eight o'clock to one o'clock. A couple of pers- personnel items that we're still looking to hire is we have a couple of custodial positions. Um the integrationist, the tech integrationist position is still uh posted and we're looking for that one. And then there's a couple of paraprofessional positions that we're still looking to fill as well. Um I also wanted to share that I, it's kind of exciting, but we had, I got an email that came through with eleven new enrollments, so there's always a.
Oh wow, nice.
An exciting, exciting moment when those come through, so um those are some of the key items that I just wanted to share out with you today, um a musters.
Are the eleven new enrollment students that were prior enrolled, are they part of the potential students that we lost last year?
Um no, most of them were coming from other areas, so they were either um some neighboring school districts, some look to be family moves, you know, like, cause from a whole different proximity.
Really, awesome. Mm-hmm.
Um so, and that hasn't, hasn't been our kids that we've reached out to to say, hey, come on back, so.
So that could be a potential motion some topic, uh, I don't have the returns.
It's huge.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Yeah, so that's why my, I was sparkling when I saw it, it's amazing, yes.
I didn't know. Wonderful, alright.
Um, and student representative, to my understanding, they're um kinda given the summer off?
Yep, yeah, if they, they have the ability to make it, that's great, but they probably don't have a lot to report on summer activities, so um that, we'll uh, we kinda keep that there as a placeholder and then. Um committee organizational reports, anybody have uh any committee reports going on right now?
What's on, uh we had a board meeting last night, um we talked about the joint powers agreement, um there's a few changes and anytime there is a big or a change on that agreement, that will come to each individual member of district's board. And then go back to that board um to, to decide on it. They were able to, last time I'd shared that they were having some issues trying to find some teachers for the summer, and that was all filled. They are struggling in the same ways finding some um different positions, feeling, I think they're non-certified positions.
Yeah.
Um so similar situation, I think that a lot of people are in, um I'm trying to think of what else. They talked a little bit about potentially, um Stearns County shares that space with them, and they've been remote, this is like for the past whatever, year, year and a half. And I believe their contract is up in twenty twenty two. And so they're talking about potentially moving one of their other programs back to that building, what would that look like, would there be remodel? Um last time that went on the Miller School just, school district, um and so some conversations are on that. Am I missing anything that was talked about last night, so, good recap.
And I'll just comment on negotiations, they're still ongoing with all groups at this point in time, uh making good progress, obviously we had just a nice little break over uh, over the fourth of July uh week. And uh kinda came kicking back into some negotiations, starting this week and a bunch on next week as well, so. Um we have those on, on the agenda as far as those dates, so that's uh, uh but yeah, still ongoing and still uh, still, still taking good progress on that, I think with all groups, so. Uh old business, let's review the strategic plan.
Um so I, I presume that's, you're looking to me to reason?
Yeah.
Get my, get my groove.
Yeah, no, that's fine, and, and yeah, clearly all kind of new answer you, so yeah, certainly uh whatever insights you have for us, and if we have any questions on that.
Yeah. Yeah, so um as I've met, I, I, one of the things that I, I would like to do is I kind of get to know all of you is, is have a little bit better understanding of. Maybe where each of us have a, a little flair and, and, and added emphasis on the strategic plan. Um as I've been looking at the strategic plan and especially um, I'm not clicking on the, on this, this document. Um this has been a really um, a, a beneficial document for me, as I've kind of tried to wrap my head around who does what, how we're aligning. Um I, I'm excited to move into our um August meeting and have some of the, the share out from each of our sites around what everybody is doing, how it aligns to. Where the strategic plan has us moving, um I think it really does, um I like the focus of, you know, the, the kind of prongs, so to speak. To really help us guide our decision making, um and, and we'll get a nice update in August as far as where everybody is at in, you know, in each of these areas. For some of the work that's been happening over the summer, and as we launch into the school year.
Sweet, amazing. Having approximately two weeks or less on the, on the job, it, it's gonna take some catching up to do for, for you as well, so. Appreciate that update in August. Uh new business, uh reorganization activities action. Um, go ahead, I'll let you kinda pick off with all of these as we go down the list.
Okay. Yep. Yeah, so as we kinda walk through, um you'll, you'll notice that um I, my recommendation is for um the official newspaper to remain the Painsville Press. Um and so that would be, that would be my recommendation there. Um payments of bills, you'll notice that um.
Are we gonna be able to group this together in a motion to accept it?
Yes.
At the bottom, yeah, yeah.
At the bottom, I think we have a motion to, to do them all, um.
Yep.
Yep.
So we'll approve all of the organizational items, so um you'll notice most of these are, well, they're all gonna look very familiar. Um that, um so the business manager, associate business manager, the district office admin assistant, and myself. Um we'll be able to authorize um fund transfers for payment to bills. Um we've got uh Matt Dickhausen and Miranda Tice as our census takers. Um the hearing officers for hot lunches would be um myself and a board chair um for the hun- hot lunch program. The banking, uh you'll notice those are consistent, um there's no recommended changes there. So Central Minnesota Credit Union, the Bank of the West for the general account and the activities account, and then PMA Financial as well. Um commencement, hard to think about, but uh it's already on, on the calendar for June fifth of twenty twenty two. Uh this is, I just identified at the high school, and I think as we get closer, we'll maybe have further conversation if it's um on the field outside again, or if that's in. The date is set for commencement. You'll also notice there is a fee schedule that is attached, I will put that, um I'll pull that up as well. Um not, no recommended changes at this point in time, the only caveat I'll add to that is. Um when we do get our federal rates for the food service programs, if for some reason there would be a, a substantial shift. Uh that may be something I bring back to the board to consider revising. Lunches are still free at this point in time, so it, it really does impact for those second choice and that additional lunch option. But that would be the only other area that, that we may at some point in time wanna revisit if we're noticing a substantial difference, but at this point in time, our recommendation is to keep them the same.
Has there been any uh, and again, the only epipexin, have you heard anything or know anything, or could you look into seeing what that free lunch program has been from? And is it something that may have some ground to continue through the next calendar year, next calendar school year?
Yeah, so our understanding is that it will stay through June of twenty twenty two.
Or. Okay, great.
Oh wow.
So that is my understanding, um which again, that makes it, so that's my understanding, I will confirm that is the case, but um that's the implement that, that I'm hearing up to this point, so.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, but that's. Wonderful.
So one, one thing that had happened is we saw a decline in free reduced lunch applications because of that.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
And so how, like, that's just something to think about and consider, how do we still encourage people, I mean, cause would a parent, would a family fill that out?
Yeah.
If they know it's gonna be free anyways, so what's the, what's the advantage of that?
Right, yeah. Right.
So that is gonna have to be um a, a very concerted effort on our part to get those forms back, back, because you, you are correct, that is where a lot of our compensatory revenue comes from. So it is going to be important for us to have those completed, whether we have them at open houses, whether we have them just at a variety of, of places to have families fill those out. Um part of that is, you know, as I'm drafting the letter, working on just really reinforcing that this, this form is more than just the school lunch form.
Right.
There is, there are some other purposes behind that, so that families do understand that, you know, it's, it's a twofold app, paper, not just for the application, so. But that's a very valid point, and it's, it's a significant concern across districts.
What's the.
It needs to be changed any little bit, because you're right, it is for a lot more than just meals.
Yep.
What's the earliest families can fill that out for the upcoming school year?
Um I believe the application, I think they can start already, yeah.
During the. Starting like kinda July first-ish, probably, just pushing them to school.
I believe so, yeah. Oh, I will confirm that with Amanda, cause she and I were working on that, but I'll confirm um that's the case.
Yeah.
Um but it's um, the, the form is always posted, it, it's um directed by MDE.
Yep.
And so as soon as that is published, we put it out and have people start completing the form.
I think the issue is confidentiality.
Mm-hmm.
Um and I don't know what the exact details are on that. It seems like sometimes you need to do something for the public system, everything's public, and most people don't want that.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
The, the other thing I always wonder is when, what, what point in time does that turn to be electronic document, where it could be filled out online versus having to be a paper form? Um I think there'd be more.
Right.
There might be a better buy-in and a, or a better app to fill it out, if they know they can just do it at home on a computer and hit submit and. And instead of filling this paper, they're like, oh, they're gonna, they'll hand everybody this, my paperwork and.
Um I think to Bruce's point, that would help alleviate some of that concern as well.
Correct, correct, that's what I think, it, just the combination of, of all of those, of the, of the manual work to fill out this paper and then bring it back, as well as the confidentiality. But, um with that, looking for a motion to approve the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two organizational items as presented.
Sold.
And a motion from Rick.
Second.
Second from Bruce, any further discussion?
I was just curious, what do hearing officers for hot lunch do? I know it's something we have to do, but.
I, I don't know if we've ever had to use it, at this, to my understa- I shouldn't say ever, but in.
It's policy.
It's, it's basically if there, if somebody who is backed on their pay for, for hot lunches, that it'd be like a hearing that was, I, I don't know the whole.
So we, I think we have to establish people, because sometimes things didn't go always the best for certain families as time went on. And it would start to back up a little bit, and then it would go to a person, and you just had to have somebody that would.
Make a decision.
Make a decision and.
Okay. I was just curious.
For try to be as careful as you can.
Well, yeah, but that's where it gets complicated, cause the legislature just passed that they get rid of, you know, that, so I don't know how functional that job is anymore, if it ever was.
It's just gonna be. Right. Right.
And yes, again, again.
It's another title, Thomas.
In, in modern, yeah, exactly, title.
It resonated.
Add that to the resume, um.
Well, who deals with it if somebody puts in a free mon- lunch application and it's turned down, and they say, no, I should have it, is, is that a part of it too?
And you have deals?
Yeah, I, I believe so, and um, but as, as we've discussed in previous years, it's. You know, there'd be no reason for this district to ever deny a hot lunch to a student for any reason, so, you know, it's just a matter of working things out and.
Right.
Again, with free lunches of the upcoming year, I don't really see the position.
We'll talk to you.
Exactly.
So, um alright, any, any further discussion?
Any question there?
Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye, opposed say no, carried.
Aye.
Aye.
Item B, shared building grounds, uh director services for the next two school years.
So um the, the agreement is um, is on, in, is identified here below. Um this really is uh modeled in the same way as the business manager agreement, um so really to have that two-year continuum of um support, so that it's not just a one-year. I think there's a lot of learning curve to go with the position, but then also some, provide some continuity for two years, so. Um this was a recommendation and, and with our retirement, and um I think it's, it seems to make a lot of sense from a partnership perspective.
How do you pronounce Steve last name?
Guzzi.
Guzzi.
Guzzi, yeah.
Well, he'd be coming to some of our board meetings, is that it?
Um you know, he certainly could, and I've included him on our ad at the meeting, mm-hmm.
I'm usually that, uh, yeah, the only rattles person here from one of the meetings.
Two meetings to do, to report, yeah, it's, it's part of the administration team.
I think that sounds great, yeah.
Um with that, looking for a motion to approve the contract for shared buildings, grounds, services with BBE.
Sold.
And motion, motion from Bruce.
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl, is any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye, opposed say no, carried. Yeah, yeah.
Uh so the next item is the um designated individual with authority, the Iowa, so every board of education has to set an individual who. Essentially can go into the secured site on MDE and authorize individuals. Um so we cannot assign that to me until the board has acted and, and identified me as a, an opportunity, an opportunity, I say. Um but that would be the board's designation, and then MDE can assign me that role.
I'll make that motion.
I got a motion from Bruce to uh identify superintendent general boarder as school official for Minnesota Department of Education. And a second from Rick, any further discussion? The only question I had is this, is that one where your name specifically has to be taught, or is that one that the superintendent of the district?
It has to be in the.
Yeah, I know there's like one or two where it had to be a specific name, not a highlight, yeah.
Yep.
I believe it is, yes.
Yes, it is, it is very, it's specific to my login, um and then.
Yep. That's what I kinda assumed with this one as well, I just wanted to verify that, so.
Yeah. Yep.
Any further discussion, all in favor say aye, aye, opposed say no, carried. CMCU credit card authorization.
So um you'll notice, um obviously with, with Matt's resignation, then that would leave me having a, that role. And then um Jonah Johnson also had not been identified as a, as a user with a credit card up to this point, so the request from business office was to identify him as well.
Looking for motion to approve the grant authorization, the general board and Jonah Johnson for CMC credit card uses.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion from Rick, and a second from Jake, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye, opposed say no, carried. Resolution calling school district special ed- election.
Yep, so this is, um so one of the things I do wanna point out that was a little bit different in the, in the initial agenda that went out, it was identified as the general election, but this is a special election. Um because it is a partial term, um and it is um not on our regular year, so you'll notice that it is, it is, the language has been re- um revised to identify the special election. So um there's a significant number of um timeframes that have to be met, and so this is all part of that process.
Great, um looking.
I'll make a motion for that resolution.
We got a motion from Bruce.
Establishing dates for filing affidavits for candidacy, am I the right one, or am I too far down?
Okay, good, good, good.
Is that too far down?
Yeah, you're too far down, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And we got a motion from Bruce and a second from Cheryl. Uh is there any further discussion? Uh we will have to take a roll call vote. Will you agree?
Yep.
Aye. Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Jake.
Aye.
Maggie.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Motion is passed. Um F, resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits for candidate, candidacy.
So this is, this is where we're gonna have, um they have a set number of day, the set number of days to um state that they intend to be a candidate. Um and I believe the dates, as I look at the actual affidavit are um through um July thirteenth. Um is when it can, it opens up, they, or we, we give them notice today, um they can start filing on July twenty seventh through August tenth.
Mm-hmm.
Looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Can I move from Cheryl, uh, present, resolution uh establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy, is second from Maggie.
I'll second.
Uh again, roll call.
Thomas.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Jake.
Aye.
Maggie.
Aye.
Cheryl.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Fiscal year twenty three, long-term facility maintenance action.
So this is um, it's an assurance of, of compliance, um this is an annual um update as well. You'll notice the two documents, the first one is the, um is the resolution, and the second one is the si- the signature item for me.
So for motion to uh adopt the resolution approving school district number seven forty one, long-term facility maintenance ten-year plan.
Sold.
Motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Cheryl. Again, we'll do a roll call.
Thomas.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Jake.
Aye.
Maggie.
Aye.
Cheryl.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I'm second to that.
Uh sorry, that's, Cheryl is second, sorry, we're rolling really fast here, aren't we? Alright, technology capital levy.
Okay, so um you'll notice these are in a little bit different order than when the initial agenda came out, and here's why. So the board has kind of two, two decisions to make, and then we have resolutions accordingly. So the first discussion to be had is, again, so this is the item that was carried from last month to this month about whether or not, what the, the wish of the board is to move forward with the capital levy. So if the board does move forward with authorizing the capital levy, which would be the second question on the ballot. Um then we have one resolution authorizing what you approved last month and this one, okay? If the board decides you don't want to move forward with this question, then we have a resolution authorizing moving forward with what you decided last month for, with the operating, okay? So that would, I think the, the first discussion to be had is what the wish of the board is around.
Tech levy.
The tech levy.
Let's jump in.
Well, I'm, everybody knows where I sit on that.
Yep.
I haven't wavered, I just, I think we have too much stuff out there. Um commonly, I'm dealing with people that seem not to have issues with what's happened with the COVID, but there are people that have, had short time. Uh income changes, yeah, the government came in with some, some stimulus, but it doesn't replace much income for most people. I just, anyway, I'm not a bit uncomfortable going back to the public. I believe when we go back to the public with single questions especially, it's our responsibility to inform them exactly what's going on. And I don't think it hurts, it's kind of our um part of being transparent. And so, couple years from now, we go back and ask for the tech levy when that time comes, but I don't have any trouble with that, I just don't.
I think uh, you know, and I, I can agree with that, and I think part of our conversation last time, I probably uh jumped into my own thought process and, and thinking this, if we do, not yet, but. Yeah, I will say it this way, if we do go back in two years or, or whatever, and go back for that tech levy, um we have options that. Like we don't have to say we have to come back, it, two years from now, we're gonna go for another ten year, and we could go ten year, we could go three year, we could go eight year, we could, we could align them up. For ten years from now, or we could align them to be every five years individuals, so that we don't feel like we're going one year and two years later, and then we're waiting eight years before we do anything else, then we're going back to back in two years.
Yeah.
We have a lot of options and essentially letting go of this thought process today gives us time to think and educate um for, for a levy in a couple years.
And I've been thinking about it too, I mean, cause I was more of like, we have goodwill right now, people are excited. It's an opportunity where you can talk about bo- both the tech levy on the, I think it's the average household, it's like a hundred and sixty, seventy-six thousand is like a dollar, so it's so minimal. But I thought a lot about what you said, and I think if we commit that we're really gonna educate the public, you know, that we're committing to, we're going out to talk about this, our operating levy, that has to pass. Like that's salaries, that's people's, you know, that's, people in the classroom, that's operating. And then commit that whole time that we're saying right behind this, we're coming for that tech levy, it's a small amount, but that's coming, I'm more comfortable with that. I just, where I was like, kinda stuck on is, there's confusion both ways, I don't think people are versed in what different funds mean. I don't think they're versed in, you can't move this fund from this fund, like, this is only for operating, this is only for tech, this is only for building, so I think if we. You know, commit to making sure that that's stays through and it doesn't kinda die out for the next year or two, but that we keep talking about it, I would be comfortable with moving to the next year. Cause that would help alleviate, and then I think about to a new role, you can go out there and be talking about one issue, and then plant in the seed for the next thing, and so I'm. I'm fine if we, if we move that way, I was kinda stuck on, I think there's gonna be confusion the other way, but I feel competent in our ability to communicate. We have Miranda, she's a social media expert, I mean, I think our communication is only gonna continue to improve, I don't, so I, I have moved on. I'd be supportive if we, if we did it on separate, I don't know where everyone else is.
And knowing that tech levy is such a small dollar amount now, with the, with the exception, yeah, with, with the exception of legis- major legislative changes, that changes the way that that's taxed.
Such as one hour, a dollar.
It is. Yeah.
Yes.
We're not looking at going from a dollar this year to a hundred dollars a household next year, or two years from now, we're looking to go to a dollar to maybe a dollar twenty-five, or, you know, it's, it's.
Right.
We're talking such minimal amounts two years from now as we are today, so it's kind of a move point.
And we can maybe, I would, like, look at what we can put on our site or wherever it may be, I don't wanna get in the weeds of what it is, but a, a dashboard of some sort, so people would always see where our funds are and, you know. Kind of a timeline that is just always in front of people, I guess that was my concern, but I, the more I thought about it, I'm like, I, you've been on this board a long time, you've been. I guess that was my concern, but I, the more I thought about it, I'm like, I, you've been on this board a long time, you've been through this, you know, the three of you have.
One thing about referendums that I see is it brings all of us to the public more.
That's true.
A lot more questions of the public, a lot of con- conversation that will go on. Um generally works out to be positive um for you moving in your position or at any time.
Yeah.
Um we all find ourselves nestling in, um kind of everything's flowing, we just let it go. This forces us to get out to the public and be able to answer question for them, get them answers if they need it, make sure everybody's informed them. I kind of like that idea.
What did everyone else think, where? I it kind of was okay either way. It was just after thinking about it too, it just, it makes the language cleaner. And we talked to everybody when we were going for the levy, we told everybody, we were straightforward, we're going to need an operating referendum, don't forget that. When you're voting, remember, we're going to need money to pay the teachers to keep the building open after we get it all built. But we really didn't talk about the other, so I I think it's just, it's it's cleaner. But if the rest of the board went the other way, I would have been fine with that too, because like you say, it's a dollar, so for most people, so I I think we could have sold it, but
Right.
I just don't keep it clean and and straightforward, so there's no confusion at all.
Clarification then, our tech levy now is for another two years.
Yes.
We have to renew in two years, we can renew as early as next year.
So in two. We could, or we could wait two years and renew it happen at the last minute.
Right.
Yes, and then if it fails, then we're in trouble.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Right.
So we maybe want to consider even doing it next year, so that we're.
I think there's a question which which election we'd rather do it at.
That's true, that's a very good point, yeah.
Yeah, it's a it's a conversation at least.
Cause this election is a better election than next year to be honest, like, yeah.
Yep. Right, mhm, yep, yep.
And yeah, but that'll be a better one than next year, so.
Yep.
That'll be fun.
Just aware of that.
Yep, this is the least, I don't have a conversation about it, yeah.
Sorry for giving her.
You know, maybe.
Eight months, ten months, so. Uh at that point, do we need, we don't really need to have to make a motion or do anything with that, I think we can.
Do we have to make a resolution that we're going?
Well, for for the tech levy though, I think we can just.
Oh, table that.
Table that uh for a conversation and.
So I, can I make a recommendation that you would um introduce a motion to direct
Yep.
the administration not to move forward with the capital levy?
We can do that.
Sold.
Because then, okay.
So we have a motion to not move forward with the twenty twenty one tech levy, uh that motion led by Bruce.
Do we need to say at this time or to clarify?
Um uh at at current time, yeah, in this meeting.
For not.
Yes, are you making it for the.
You know, like, not that we're never, but.
For the November election.
Yeah, for for the November.
For this November.
At the current time makes sense.
Election, I I'll second that.
At the current time. Yep, and I have a, so motion from Bruce, uh second from Maggie. Is any further discussion? Uh hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no, carried.
Okay.
All right, operating referendum.
So then, um what we have is you will see, um so this is where the board had move had authorized moving forward with um the so you're gonna see option um two says if technology capital levy is not approved as presented. So then we're gonna say, um this is the um this is the resolution to move forward with the um with the referendum that you approved last month, okay? So it's relating to the increase of the general education revenue of the school district approving new referendum revenue authorization and calling an election thereon. So this would be the resolution that we need to approve.
And then the ballot question is, we're approving that ballot question too, right?
So then you'll see the ballot question. Yep, that is identified and it is one question.
So this will have to be a roll call vote then as well for the resolution.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution, um option two along with the uh ballot question um as presented.
Sold.
And motion from Bruce. I'll second. I'll second, I'll second, yeah.
Thomas.
Yes.
Yep.
Uh Thomas.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Jake.
Aye.
Maggie.
Aye.
Cheryl.
Aye.
That's a clarifying question, we already voted on it, but this language is the language that we, there's no wavering on this language, right, this is a language that has to be.
Yep. Mind if I said that's the language?
This is the.
Statute.
This is statute.
That's the statute, I.
This is the the legal language that has to be presented.
Okay. Assumed, but so.
Yeah.
We're we're, or let's, we can finish this, sorry.
Okay.
Motion, it's carried.
It's carried, yeah.
Um because it is hard, the way it's worded, I I think we'll have to think about that, I mean
I think.
For people to understand, is that five hundred, one for, is that how much a tax is?
Yeah, it's always. It's always been hard, I I think you even talked about this two or three months ago, we knew
Yeah.
Right.
the language is always difficult and that's the education piece that we need to ensure is is understood, because
No, it's also.
not only is that the dollar figure per pupil and and how that all mathematically computes, but then also the vote yes, vote no, and which one, you know, voting yes is is there really, you know, increased tax, I think that's what it was, and so just kind of making sure that that's educated that way and signed appropriately and
Right. Correct.
everything, the mailers, everything is just done, so. Um scheduled upcoming meetings, uh we have the working to learn session August tenth and the regular school meetings August twenty fourth. Uh note that the uh work and learn is five P M, not six P M, is that on election day again, or something?
It is primary, mm-hmm, yeah.
Yep, so um and then uh our additions agenda had the addition of of all the negotiation meetings that are coming up here in the next if four of them the next two weeks, so.
Um can I add one caveat, I'm sorry, I should add that in my um superintendent report, but um on the August tenth meeting, um I I know that the
Great.
we have our open house for the new facility on um August twelfth and so our intent is to during that work, during that session is have an opportunity for the board to tour the space and have dialogue with, you know, David and um Matt around um the the new space, so there can be questions and you guys can answer, ask questions that you may get, um and then we can talk a little bit more about what where you kind of land on that August twelfth date, so just to answer that question.
Yep. And I think we all discussed that as well, and you're assuming the twelfth is still available for everybody, we're all very willing to
To be the.
I should say, we shouldn't put everybody in that, but I think we're all pretty willing to to assist in in any uh any way possible and any means. Uh what was the time for those?
Five.
Five P M, I think it starts at five P M or later, for tours, okay.
Yep, yep, five to eight is the the whole shindig, yeah.
Yep, okay.
So there'll be a a pre-event like co-sponsored with the community um foundation and there'll be the ribbon cutting ceremony that'll be at five oh five.
Okay, what's the time of the pre-event at?
At five.
At five, okay, so.
Yep, and then there'll be like a little um kind of presentation and
Yep.
but it would be great if the board could be there, cause there will be some little opportunities and there will be the cutting.
Yep. I I'd have no problem being there, four thirty to four forty five or eight A M, I'm just ready to go.
Eight A M.
Can't be else the night before.
Breakfast. Yeah, all right, um.
The kind of another question, so the August tenth meeting or one of the upcoming meetings, well, if we could just like determine like for the vote yes, like how we're gonna work through some of that.
Yep. Yeah, I think we start that conversation right away, if I have that on the agenda, that'd be great.
Right away, yeah.
Yep. That.
That one, for motion to adjourn?
Sold.
Add a motion from Jake.
I'll second.
A second from Bruce, any further discussion, all hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say no, carried.
To your support.
Welcome, great job, you're a great meeting, yes.